All right, so we'll call it to order tonight, special meeting. Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, thank you. Mayor Kelly Krebs here. Mayor Pro Tem Robert Parkhurst.
Here.
Councilmember Edward Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Jean Goss.
Here.
And Councilmember Christine Lo.
Present.
Madam Mayor, we have a forum.
Thank you. Councilmember Lo, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes. All right, ready to begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My only amazing inspiration for tonight, since this is a special meeting, is just the idea, also this election year, just the idea of sportsmanship and fair play, fair behavior. And I would like to commend especially our council, but those of us who really listen to both sides, try to take everything in and also respect other sides, especially in the World Series game. It is against one of our biggest rivals of all time, but I really appreciate how our games are going, of course, but also the teamwork and the respect that each team has for one another. So, go Dodgers.
Great, thank you very much. Because it is a special meeting, we are not required to have public comment for items not on the agenda. But Madam City Clerk, if anyone has submitted a card for that, we will allow it tonight.
Yes ma'am, there is one speaker card from Mark Fleming.
Hi, can you please approach?
First, we greatly appreciate your time to be able to discuss this matter with you guys. Thanks so much. My name is Mark Fleming, this is my domestic partner, Way Miao. If the Band-Aid falls off my face, she's a registered nurse, so anyway. We're the owners, proud owners of the property at 4:30 Churchill Road, Sierra Madre. We were notified in late June by Southern California Edison of their plan to replace some of the older damaged utility poles in our area. At the time, we were given the choice of having our wooden utility pole replaced with a similar one or a composite pole. We elected to stay with the wooden pole option. Please keep in mind, at the time, we were given the impression this was primarily due to damage done to the older pole and old age. I think some of that damage was done by woodpeckers and that kind of thing. Following a few delays, a few delays on Edison's part, we were notified of the date of installation, which would occur August 27th. But we were informed, nothing against you guys, that due to the city of Sierra Madre denying the required use of a crane to install the requested wooden pole, we would have to settle for the composite pole. So, nothing we could do. The problem is, the new composite pole, much wider in diameter than the wooden pole, installed on our property less than four feet from our bedroom window, would just over one foot from the roof, very, very close to the structure. Not only is it a real eyesore, but more important, it turns out Edison is looking to upgrade their electric power distribution lines from about 4,000 volts or 4 kilovolts to 16,000 volts or 16 kilovolts. Now, we were not informed of this in the beginning is the main reason, again, given for replacing the old pole was due to damage and age. By the way, my research shows that here in California, utility poles must maintain a minimum distance of six feet from buildings and structures. As I said, this huge composite pole newly installed is less than four feet from our house. And very important, we were under the impression that the new pole was being installed due to damage and age of the old pole, not for a planned huge boost in power. We feel that Edison should have been more, a little more above board on this. We're also concerned too, not only for our health and the eyesore, but about a possible loss in property value. So, we greatly appreciate the city council's feedback and any help you guys can give us on this matter. Last we heard, we were the only property owners in our area to have the new pole installed thus far. And again, we thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for bringing this to our attention, and we'll have staff look into it.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Madam Mayor, there are no other speaker cards at this time.
And am I correct that we did not receive any email comments for this evening either for items not on or not on the agenda?
You are correct.
Thank you. Okay, so I think we will jump right into it, given the special meeting. And so, no, actually, sorry. We need to approve the meeting agenda. And I would recommend that we reverse the order, since we spoke about the fire department master plan in the last meeting, and perhaps we have the police plan presented first. So, if folks are in agreement, I would entertain a motion to that effect.
So, moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
If that's okay with them.
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
Okay, so on that basis, I would like to call up Chief Barrientos to present on the Police Department organizational assessment plan.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and City Council. Today I will be presenting the findings of our organizational assessment. Thank you first and foremost for allowing me to present the recent assessment of the Sierra Madre Police Department. The assessment is an invaluable tool for our department, providing a clear and objective view of where we are today and where we would need to go to meet the evolving needs of our community. As a chief of police, my primary focus is to ensure we have trained officers delivering the highest level of service to protect the residents of Sierra Madre. And this assessment gives us a roadmap to focus on those important objectives. It identifies areas where we are performing well and highlights specific areas where improvements are necessary to increase efficiency, reduce risk, and most importantly, enhance the safety and well-being of our residents. This assessment is more than a list of recommendations. It is a guiding document that will help us prioritize immediate needs, establish midterm goals, and outline aspirational objectives based on available city resources. We are already working on implementing many of these recommendations, and with your continued support, this assessment will be instrumental in shaping a stronger, more responsive police department, better equipped to serve our community today and into the future. The Sierra Madre Police Department partnered with Meloria Public Safety Consulting, I will refer to them as Meloria, moving on forward, to conduct the assessment. Meloria was chosen because of their reputation and expertise in the field of law enforcement. This assessment provides a data-driven perspective on our strengths and areas of improvement. This assessment highlights our accomplishments and our strategic recommendations across several key areas: staffing, risk, strategic management, and operational efficiency. The 125 recommendations are recommendations only. We are in compliance with the police officer standards of training, as well as the Department of Justice. This assessment will serve as our roadmap for improvement, helping us achieve immediate and long-term goals aligned with our city's priorities. Under my leadership, this department has already completed over 40 of the recommendations. We will continue to prioritize the recommendations based on the department's current and future needs, provided we have resources needed to complete the recommendations. Current culture of the organization. Our department's culture is foundational to our success. The assessment emphasizes our department's commitment to a supportive, team-oriented, environment critical for public safety. While our internal culture is strong, the assessment identified opportunities for professional growth through an early intervention program and additional wellness initiatives, which can further enhance morale and operational performance. This slide shows our updated organizational chart as a result of the recommended structural realignment. This reorganization aims to streamline responsibilities and support departmental growth, adding key positions such as a full-time lieutenant for administrative duties and officers in hybrid positions to improve overall coordination and efficiency, enhancing our capacity to serve Sierra Madre. So, it's basically divided into the recommended, we were operations and administration before, now we're operations, administration, and support services, as recommended.
Would you take questions as we go through, or would you like to wait till the end?
The end, probably easier.
Okay.
Whatever you'd like, ma'am.
You can wait till the end.
Current staffing levels, this is a chart of our current staffing levels. Our current staffing reflects the team's dedication to serving our community's needs and highlights areas for improvement. With 23 full-time staff and 14 part-time members, the assessment recommends additional positions to cover operational needs effectively, particularly in patrol and community relations, ensuring we are ready to meet current and future demands. This chart here, with our current staff of 23 full-time, 14 part-time, the assessment recommends changes to the structure and additional positions to cover operational needs effectively, particularly in those areas that I described, community relations and patrol, to meet current and future demands. As chief, I'm tasked with evaluating these recommendations and providing my recommendations based on our goals, objectives, and availability. So, this is what they recommended, it's in the three divisions of operations administrative, and this is full staff, optimal with the recommendation, which I will discuss a little later. This slide here shows the officers, all of our staff's collateral duties. What it doesn't include in these collateral duties is calls for service, any post DOJ mandates, any events that are, we have in the city. These are just collateral duties that all of the officers are tasked with. Many of our staff take on collateral duties beyond their primary responsibilities, contributing to the department's adaptability and resilience. The assessment suggests a more formal approach to managing collateral assignments, ensuring fair distribution and regular rotation for a broader professional development and reduce burnout. So, something we're looking at and evaluating at the moment is distributing that more evenly so that we don't get burnout. Overview and findings. Meloria identified six themes. Of the themes, I have prioritized the following three: organizational structure, risk management, and strategic foresight. These themes serve as a guide with recommendations that would help us improve accountability, foster professional growth, and reinforce our mission to serve the community safely and efficiently. We've already started, number one, with the restructure, reorganization of the department. Roles and responsibilities, the collateral duties have to be equally distributed so that we have an equal playing field. Risk management and liability, I'm not too concerned about it. Fortunately enough for our city, we don't have an excess of personnel complaints, pursuits, or uses of force. So, that's, we do do an overview every year when we present before the city council, so I'm not too concerned. Process improvement, those are areas that we're implementing based on the recommendations, just for greater efficiency, you know, a little more oversight. So, they're kind of checks and balances that we're implementing. Professional growth through excellence, that's a real important one. Currently, we train our officers one step up. So, our, most of our patrol officers that are off probation go to field training officer school. Our sergeants have all been to, or, correction, our corporals have all been to supervisor school. So, in the event that we need them to step up into the supervisor role, they've already been to the supervisor's school. All of our sergeants, it's recommended by Meloria, all of our sergeants have been to leadership school. The specific course that they recommended, we couldn't send them to that course, however, we have sent them to a course. We, we're mandated, for professional growth, we're mandated to have 24 hours of updated training every two years, post-training. Currently, we have six instructors that we've developed and trained for in-house training. What that means is, we don't have to go to another department or pay fees to receive training, we're doing it all in-house. At the same time, we get reimbursed for that training and the voids to fill in the shifts through post. So, it's all reimbursable, and we've developed six instructors. We need one more instructor to have the full 24 hours every two years covered in-house with our own department. Key recommendations, these were key. Key recommendations include increasing staff, refining training programs, and enhancing risk management practices. These priorities will help us address immediate challenges, like minimum staffing and overtime management while preparing us to meet future demands strategically and proactively. I've already discussed it, the restructuring, expanding, I have a plan for that, slow, gradual, strategic, I will discuss a little later. Invest in employee wellness, right now, we've just sent out our employees a survey to get input and buy-in to implement a employee wellness program. Updating technology, we're evolving. Some of our technology is, I wouldn't say outdated, but could be updated, you know, with flock cameras and, although we have body worn cameras and managerial systems. And then, facility infrastructure, if you go look at our police station, it was kind of funny, I was talking to one of our civilian staff, and she informed me that she had to go through five doors to get to the restroom. It's a maze, we're on top of each other, it's small, it's old, it's just not fit for a police department. Roadmap for implementation. Based on Meloria's staffing recommendations, I need to clarify that our community's safety is not compromised by our current staffing levels. Our number one priority is ensuring that our community is safe. These recommendations, so the recommendations on the left, outline an ideal structure most agencies, including ours, could benefit from. So, this is optimal, this is what they recommend. However, as a chief, I am closely attuned to the department's need. I can confidently report that we are fully staffed. This allows us to maintain the safety and well-being of our city and our community. The future plan, with the support of the city and city council and the community, is to implement added staffing in phases, beginning with essential roles, so priorities. So, if you look over to the right, in the next couple of years, phase one, with the support of everyone, is implement two additional police officers. One police officer to alleviate some of the overwork, overburden of our collateral duties out in patrol. The second officer would serve four purposes, which would be community outreach officers, school resource, and then possibly a cadet program. That would be the phase two, which would come later on after an assessment, would be to get a full-time records clerk, and maybe a fifth sergeant that would work twofold, administrative and in patrol, to alleviate. And last, in the future, would be to add an additional dispatcher and additional professional staff. Looking ahead to 2028, our vision is to build a police department that is responsive, well-equipped, and deeply integrated into the community. Through this assessment, we can develop a clear strategic plan with goals that will support our growth, efficiency, and alignment with best practice in modern policing. If you look in 2028, we will have our 100th year anniversary of being a police department. Some of the things that we'd like to implement in the near future is the Community Police Academy. We have an itinerary already created, however, it's going to create additional resources to get it moving forward. I've gotten a lot of input about a youth outreach program or a cadet program. That's something that we're looking at for the future, obviously fulfilling some of our staffing needs slowly, strategically. To the size of Sierra Madre, I think the best way to put it, it's their recommendation, it's to the size of, to fit Sierra Madre. Then, create a succession plan, I think, training up and continue to train up, and obviously, our facility. I've talked about our infrastructure, it's old, outdated, and we just need to get a new facility. Lastly, I recommend adopting this assessment as a guiding document only for future planning. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Questions?
I'll start with a question on staffing. I noticed the report said that we used to have an administrative assistant for the chief, and that we no longer have that. Who does your administrative work?
I do.
So, what is?
I do, so, let me back up. Recently, we've, I have a sergeant, a part-time sergeant, who is assisting me, myself and the captain, with some administrative duties. And what I mean administrative duties is, she is assisting me implementing these 125 recommendations. So, the administrative assistant, it was a secretary, it was there before, so I do my own calendar, I do my own work, yes.
And then, is it, then what is the, explaining to me, I guess, the other part of the office administration? Like, I saw the chart, but you have?
So, the other one that they recommended, it's?
Not what they recommended, what do we have?
So, administratively, it's Captain Amos, myself, and just recently, the part-time sergeant.
So, what does, like, say Wendy Kenner do, or those kinds of things? What do they do?
Wendy Kenner is responsible support services, so she handles all of records, she's handling our community service officers, our CSOs, she handles all of our social media, all of our RIPA, Racial Nigading and Profiling Act, NI bars, so she does all of the support services.
So, is that like the part-time records person on here?
Yes.
Okay.
We do not have a full-time person, so we have two part-time employees that work records.
Okay. Thank you.
Could I follow up on that, on your slide with collateral duties? Can you, to follow up on what Councilmember Lo said, what of the items on there is Officer Kenner doing?
That's, yeah, that's, oh, I see.
Kenner, so J. Dick Administrator, she's a Cal photo administrator, CLETS ACC Coordinator, Cal OES Training, allotments manager, and for reimbursement, vault safe bank deposits, we do handle cash, petty cash, BOA reconciliation, social media, that's, those are all of the things not included on there, she's also the CSO person, so we have her covering all that, that's just Kenner.
And she works part-time?
She's full-time.
Oh.
So, you said CSO, so CSO is what?
So, it's a community service officer.
Community service, okay. Got it, okay. I was getting confused with the PIO, that's what I was, okay.
I think that's very valuable, but just, I guess, I didn't understand, because according to the chart, it said we have two part-time, so really, we have one full-time. She, if she's the record, it says right here?
Support services.
It says sworn full-time, and then it says professional staff full-time. I guess I'm having trouble reading, I'll learn how to read it, the chart. Go ahead.
So, just following up on that, so we have two part-time records clerks, and I see all the duties here on page 173 and 174 of the Meloria report, and it's, there's quite a few things to do. Are they doing all these duties, or do some of our sworn officers do those duties as they're, like, submitting tickets and things like that, or is that all solely on the records clerk? Or are our officers doing some of those duties as well?
No, the processing of all of our citations, whether they be all reports, citations, they're reviewed by the sergeant, turned into records, and records has to input every single citation into the system and submit them to the court. So, it's two part-time employees that are doing that.
So, what is the Meloria report envisioning there? It's one full-time, and then lightening the load of those, the other, the two part-times to do other things? Because they are, or at least Kenner's full-time, can focus on other things?
Yes, so what they're recommending is a full-time person who would be dedicated and an expert just at records. Currently, we have two part-time records persons, but based on the 960 hours that they're allotted to work, there isn't enough time to fill all of those collateral duties that come with, so it's processing reports, the other word I'm looking for, discovery, requests from, copies of report, they're dealing with the desk also. So, there's a lot of collateral duties with the records person.
So, if you go to page 31 of the report, it does say additional personnel recommended for these three sections. One full-time lieutenant, one full-time professional staff administrator, one full-time sergeant, and a line-level staff, which I assume is kind of administrative assistant. The full-time lieutenant would manage administrative section, would include professional standards, training, equipment, all of the things be kind of listed in that section of the collateral section. A full-time professional staff administrator to manage support services and dispatch records, kind of what Kenner seems to do. And then, addition of one sergeant to manage traffic, detective, part-time. I know that's outreaching a lot, for a lot, but would that help with this, I guess, this issue that we're kind of having with so many things coming in at your department, so many things that you guys take in, and all these collateral jobs you guys do, which really benefit community policing? I mean, in my opinion, that is the epitome of community policing, is by having this, then you prevent having worse crime, you have lower crime, you have lower incidences of police, poor interaction with the public, it's all positive. And I think the one main complaint we have with our public is mostly bears and traffic. So, would something like that benefit, like, would that validate your need for some of these positions?
I don't think I understood your question.
Would, what their recommendation is, having a full-time lieutenant, a full-time professional staff member, administrator, a full-time sergeant, and a line-level staff, would that alleviate some of the, I guess, some of the organizational issues we have with meeting the needs of our public, but still keeping community policing important?
Yes, it would remove some of the overburden collateral duties from some of our personnel. Yes.
I liked the one recommendation of that, was that we organize these collateral duties that people are doing into the CAD system. So, like, for instance, if someone goes on a bear call, it's not just logged in as a part of their patrol, it's logged in specifically.
Question.
So, would that, would that seem to be, is that hard to implement? Is creating a different thing in your designation, yeah, category, in your CAD system for these collateral issues that aren't exactly patrol?
Is it difficult, no. So, it's something else that we're doing now, something they identified, Meloria identified, is though we're accurately staffed, or we're staffed, they couldn't give a true depiction of the organization, because there was a lot of areas, for example, those collateral duties, that we failed to properly document via a CAD event.
Got it.
So, what we've done, which is why you've seen a rise in CAD events, it's more productivity on the field, but also, we've started documenting. When it was brought to our attention, we immediately implemented to further document the time we're spending. For example, our officers can write reports in their police vehicle, while they were showing clear, so that didn't capture time spent in a report.
Got it.
Because we're required to stay clear to handle calls.
Makes sense.
Or if we were at an event at the park, we would remain clear. we would remain clear to handle calls, in reality, we didn't log it. So we started logging it because it was brought to our attention. It's kind of unique, but yes, we're further documenting it so we could project forward to our, to our needs. Yes.
Please.
So, you know, I realize this is a, you know, future document, meaning it's aspirational, a lot of it, but not all of it. So when we're talking about the KIMBA recommendations being an increase in staff, I think you mentioned when you had the slide up that one of, one of the ones we'd like to potentially implement would be two full-time officers that, that flex. So my understanding is, is that, obviously, we don't have a recruitment problem right now because we're fully staffed, but was, would that help with retention and because of burnout? Or, or what, how does that work and how does that help? And how does flex work?
I, I think number, number, first and foremost, it would help fill some of the voids and areas that we need. For example, community outreach. So it would help fill some of those voids. In addition, it would alleviate some of the burnout from patrol. Right now, the way we're structured is we have enough staff to fill each shift. So if anyone calls in sick, is out on bonding for a long period of time, goes out on vacation, we need to fill that void, either one with an officer that comes in on overtime, or if we have this hybrid position, that person can fill that void and adjust.
Can I follow up on that? Just have an understanding of, it's my understanding that some officers do want overtime, but there's a, there's a, is there a fine line there about getting overtime? Do we have scheduled overtime, or is it just when it, when it happens? How's, how's that work?
So we don't have, that, that's, that's a-
Is that outside the scope of this report?
No, but it, so most officers nowadays do not like the overtime.
Okay, okay.
Contrary to the past.
Okay.
They do not. They want time with their families, they want to be out there, kids at sports, so on and so forth.
Understand that.
So, no, you don't, you don't have those officers volunteering like they did in the past.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you.
More questions?
I just have a-
Councilmember Garcia?
So we have a fully staffed department, and that's great. That's an accomplishment in and of itself, given our history. And we have a plan in front of us that gives us an optimum kind of goal. And I see some kind of half-steps to get to that goal. I guess my, my, my concern when I hear about officers not wanting to do overtime, and I hear that, I'm just thinking, in the typical staffing situation, in any personnel situation, you are going to have people sick, you are going to have people on vacation. It seems like our current staffing situation is barely adequate. I mean, it's fully staffed, but that, to me, seems barely adequate. Given, given the potential for loss of personnel for all variety of reasons. So the, the officers that Councilmember Garcia just brought up are, is it your opinion that if we were to do that at some point in your future, we would be in better shape in terms of burnout, in terms of potential staff holes?
Absolutely. It would alleviate a lot of the overburden overload that our officers are experiencing, absolutely.
So short of a full reorganization where we're putting in lieutenants and other personnel, that would be a good kind of short-term goal?
Correct. Based on Meloria's recommendation, that's optimal. Knowing the department from the inside, this would, by adding two additional officers, it would allow us to slowly and strategically move forward towards that goal.
And can you just ballpark us, or maybe it was in the report and I don't remember, what would the cost of that be?
I do not have costs.
Can I follow up on that? So, so on the slide that you have, on the minimum staffing needs, the two police officers, the school resource and, and then the lieutenant, so kind of the, the three people you have on your minimum staffing needs, you haven't costed out what that, what that would be?
I have not.
Okay. If we're-
Are you moving to a different topic?
Yes, go ahead.
Councilmember Garcia, where you've, okay, just wanted to make sure.
If you want maybe Human Resources Director would maybe not, maybe not give you a little ballpark?
Yeah, and to answer the question regarding the, your question, to bring in a, an officer at step one, you're looking at, you know, fully burdened, close to 90,000. So it, it just depends on, at the level, whether it's a, a new hire or a lateral. So that would, that would determine the, the cost of the, the payroll.
Without a signing bonus?
Yeah, well, yeah, without the signing bonus.
Mayor, oh.
Sorry, to follow up on that, may I?
Yes, please.
Do, do we have any, I don't want to ask the wrong question, but obviously, step one is cheaper than a lateral. Do we have any say on whether or not we can have a lateral or, or somebody that's new? Can we, or do we have to just take, take the applicant pool as it is? And we can't kind of rank our preferences regarding costs? Like, I'm trying to understand, and it's an HR question, and I, I just don't know that.
Yeah, so-
Breaking any laws, right?
Yeah, it's a great, great question. When we experience a vacancy, we evaluate what the need is at that time. And it could be that we, we, we would like to bring in a lateral, so our recruitment would be focused on bringing in a lateral. You know, in some cases, you will receive, or we receive applications from both lateral and recently graduated from an academy applicant, application. So we will determine what the need is and look for that particular application that fits our needs at the time.
Thank you, thank you.
Mayor Bartin?
So if we were to have someone depart, how easy would it be to replace them at this day and age? I mean, I know it's going to depend on the, the role and the officer and, you know, the place, but how easy would it be to, to replace a, you know, a line officer or a detective?
It, it's difficult, especially if they leave this organization with a background or, or training. For example, a detective who's tenured with some time. So it takes years to develop somebody, especially in the city of Sierra Madre. We don't have all of that exposure like bigger cities. So it takes a while. Also, the application process, so this is one of those jobs where it requires a background. It's a very vetted process. So if we hired somebody today, it's about three to four months before their background is complete. And then from those four months, even though they're a lateral, they're coming from another agency, we're required through post to train them. There's, there's an accelerated training, and then there's the long one, which is somebody straight out of the academy or someone who hasn't completed patrol. So the process is long. It, it usually takes anywhere between a year to a year and a half before they're let go on their own. So it is a very long dragged-out process.
So what's next for you? So what, what, you've got the recommendations, you've got 125, and you've already addressed about 40 of them, but how are you going to use this plan? How are you going to use it to, to, you know, in the next couple of years?
So we've already taken action, I've, I've, or we have created a, the Sierra Madre Organizational Assessment Progress Report, where I have all 125 recommendations listed. They're all in different phases that we've implemented them, depending on priority. So completed and implemented, initiated phase of rollout, long-term requiring funding, staffing, or systems. And lastly, identified but does not apply. So what, what that means is we have some assess, so we've already rolled them out. So we've, we've already started, we're one-third done. I believe it'll take us about a year to roll out most of these or implement. However, there are some in here that are not applicable, that require some change of meet and confer with the MOU, with the unions. There are some manuals that they're requesting, requesting for certain sections of the department. Those are very time-consuming. We don't want to outsource them, as they can be expensive, so that'll take us a little bit longer. However, when you look at the whole assessment, most are low-hanging fruit.
That's good to hear.
So I am comfortable that probably within the next year, I will provide you with a progress report. And most of these that are applicable to our agency will be implemented.
So how do you take those 125 recommendations you've got and match them with the three phases you had on your roadmap for implementation? How do those work together? What does that look like? How do you figure out kind of, yeah, how, how do those two things work together? Because I can see the checklist on the one side, but I'm not seeing the phased approach that you've got, how that, where you're going with that, like how, what your plan is for that?
I don't think I understand.
I think the phasing was just for staffing.
It's just for staffing, so it's, it's just, it's just a hiring?
I think, I think that was the, the phasing for the, the staffing increase.
So it's just, so, so you've got the, so you've got all the action items in there, and then you've got a hiring plan that will go with it?
Correct.
And, and then how does that hiring plan relate to the, the 125 action items that you've got?
So the only way it, it, well, it'll affect the additional, because we're required, so these are more policy and procedures, best, best practices. So I think for efficiency and effectiveness as an organization, as we bring people on, I think the processes that we implement internally based on this plan, I think it'll facilitate a lot of internal collateral duties.
To, to put some meat on that bone, you mean like, for example, you brought up the manuals. If you had additional staff, that would free up time either with the, the new folks or free up time of, of your existing staff to devote more time to something like that, because there'd be others to take up other duties that may be more pressing than, than the manuals? Is that kind of an example of what you're talking about?
That is correct.
Here's an example. It says addition of two FTOs, which I believe is full-time officers. We have it marked as completed, or you have it marked as completed, wouldn't it benefit more to say as a need? Because you have it in your phases, so would it benefit the organization progress to show it as a need? Or maybe not in progress, because we're not hiring right this minute, but-
Ma'am, that one's there, we probably should clarify, it's field training officers.
Oh, so it's not like what you're talking about? Oh, got it.
Not FTE.
Not FTE.
Sorry.
That makes much more sense right there.
One more question. Do you have a strategic plan in kind of like where you, you've, you've got some, some great components here. You've got some great stuff out of the report, you've got some great ideas in, in the presentation. Do you have a strategic plan for the department for the next five years?
That is exactly what we're working on right now. We just had our first meeting last week.
Fantastic.
And we're working towards that goal to align ourselves with the city goals, our mission and vision, and the needs of our community. Yes.
I just had one question, because we've talked a lot about staffing and a number of the other items that you mentioned in kind of your overall assessment of the assessment. One, one area that you mentioned a couple of times, but I didn't see as much detail, is in the area of risk management. And obviously, I'm, you know, want to make sure that, that we're fully square on that. So I, I'm not sure, when you, when you include that as one of the, you know, top priorities or top categories, you know, what, what are you thinking in terms of that? Is it, is it staffing? Is it something else? Is it, you know, what, what exactly, when you say risk management, is, is the implementation or action item associated with that?
So what the assessment was inferring to is that we'd have a managerial system to have oversight, and that's a left-up. We implemented it last year. However, we had a little bit of a hiccup because Lexipol bought them off. So they went and kind of switched over. So fortunately for us, here in Sierra Madre, we don't have a problem with an excessive amount of uses of force complaints, where you have to put, or pursuits, where you have to put a threshold in a system. That's what the system does of high-risk employees. That's the great thing about Sierra Madre, is that our uses of force, pursuits, personnel complaints are very low. Each complaint, or any of those three that I've described, goes through several levels of review. So it goes first through the sergeant, the captain, and then myself, finally. If we identify any issues or concerns with, as it relates to training or any misconduct, we take action appropriately, depending on the circumstance. But each report, I can assure, assure you, is fully vetted and reviewed. Each one as it comes in, and then we, we look at them all yearly. So we do have the system in place, it's up and running, but we're making baby steps to get it fully functional.
Great. So this is a very specific area of risk management that you're thinking of around, around potential concerns with officer interactions or officer behavior?
Yeah, we also have a, a audit overview system in place where we do random checks of our body-worn cameras to ensure that officers are following policies and procedures and identify any issues or concerns, and then counsel the officer or take action as necessary. So we do have a lot of systems in place to ensure those risk management concerns.
Great. Oh, thank you very much.
I have one more question I just thought of. How often are these master plans usually done? Or when was our last one done? Do we know?
I do not know, ma'am.
You mean like a departmental-specific one?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, that's a good question. If the last one we did, it's probably been over 20 years since we've done one.
Then I have one more kind of important question that has to do with this. I, I appreciate all the staffing, and it's really interesting. My worry now is, you have, like they've recommended, you have kind of a very small area to do all of this work that you guys do, and you've outgrown it probably years ago, if we haven't done a study in 20 years. Do we, do you see a plan for that in the future to remedy some of this? I mean, you guys, that dispatch looks like it's on top of each other. I don't even know how you'd have more people or a new system in there. What is your plan for facilities?
I'm hopeful. Hopefully, we can get a grant, just like the library did, to get a more fit, adept facility. Right now, I think the biggest concern is to ensure that our staffing levels are at a level to be able to provide more effective and efficient police services to our-
And those are two different budgets, right? You don't use facility budgets for, you don't use infrastructure budgets for personnel costs every month, every year?
I do not have an infrastructure budget. No, ma'am.
Councilmember Garcia?
It's just a kind of final question for me, as, as I'm reflecting and we're hearing about potential and need for more personnel and, you know, I feel as though, and it's, it's not commentary, it's, it's a question, but gone are the days of Andy and Barney. Because as, as technology increases, crimes, it seems like crimes increase, right? So is it your opinion that as, as we kind of grow as a society, and there are more ways to harm individuals in different ways, that it's kind of a function of the growing society that we need more people in order to then, I mean, before it was just kind of like physical harm and property theft, and now it's like cyber threats and all kinds of other threats, vehicles, and I think it's, it's grown exponentially. Is it your opinion that as, kind of as society grows, that just having two officers walking around isn't enough anymore? Because there's so much more crime that a police officer has to deal with? If that makes sense? I'm, I'm just kind of musing here, but is that, is that the reason why police departments have been increasing in size? Because of, and, and the mandates from state and federal as well?
I think a lot of cities outside of ours are increasing in size based on crime trends that they've identified in addition to the needs of the community. I think there's a lot more oversight. I think what, what we have to look at, Sierra Madre, we're 23 strong. However, I have to meet the same standards through post DOJ than the LAPD with 10,000 employees and the sheriffs with 18,000. We meet the same standard of requirements. So I think a lot of agencies, just based on the volume of calls, volume of activity, they're adding, and volume of specialized assignments, for example, cadets, community outreach, things of that nature, they're expanding.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, great. Then I will open up for public comment.
Then I will open up for public comment on the item that we just discussed.
Madam Mayor, there are no speaker cards for this item, nor did the city clerk's office receive any emails.
Okay. Um, so I'll bring it back for discussion. Um, there's, I think it's two different ways we can go here. We can talk about the um, the PD plan or the PD assessment that we just discussed. Or we could table that discussion, allow any further update on the fire for our second agenda item. And then combine the discussions of the two um, at the end. So I'm, I'm, I'm open to either. Personally, I think a combined discussion might make some sense, but I'm happy to, um, happy to go either way.
I agree with the combined.
Whatever you guys want, it's fine.
Good with that too.
Okay, so let's, let's table the discussion on our first agenda item. And then um, I believe Chief Bartlett had a little bit of an update or a further refinement of our discussion, of our item from last week. Oh, and just in case, it's uh, five to four Yankees.
Yeah, we're ready.
Okay.
Can we get it up on the, the screens over there as well? Um, good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members Goss, Garcia and Lo. Uh, thank you for the opportunity um, that I had last week to present the fire department's master plan. Um, at the city council meeting. I appreciated the engaging dialogue. Um, I think that my peer here got off a lot easier on the questioning, but. I welcome, I welcome that conversation. Um, as, as part of the received feedback that I got from my presentation last week, I, I, what I took the liberty of doing was um. Hopefully expanding on what I perceive as the next steps. And, and I heard that again this evening. So I put together a brief presentation that will kind of, will kind of cover that. But basically the, the next steps in transforming the, the uh, fire department's master plan. Into a department-specific strategic plan that aligns with the city's visions. Will focus on careful prioritization informed by stakeholder feedback. This process will involve assessing each recommendation for feasibility, budget impact. And alignment with community needs to ensure that the plan addresses the most pressing priorities effectively. Input from key stakeholders, which will include city officials, community members and department personnel. Will provide essential insights and promote buy-in. Developing, implementing and evaluating the strategic plan will be a phased process. Taking time to refine objectives and measure progress. Regular evaluation will help assess effectiveness, allowing for adjustments that respond to evolving needs, resources and feedback. To ensure the strategic plan remains both actionable and aligned with the city's broader goals. The following slides represent an example of an implementation timeline based off of the master plan recommendations. And again, being as uh, this is a new document that was received not long ago. There still is a more in-deal uh, or in-depth dive into this plan. Uh, not only from myself, but from all the stakeholders to where we're going to be able to now extract their findings and recommendations. And put them into our departmental strategic plan. Uh, again, um, and a little back history, I know I've shared that with a, with a couple of council members. Uh, our fire department does have a strategic plan in place. We put that in place in two thousand and twenty-two. We've actually been able to um, be executable on quite a few of the items. Uh, but as we all know, those are living documents. And I'm very excited to have this master plan that's going to help me to take a look at it, revise it and bring it current. But again, it's, it's a, it's an evaluation that's still forthcoming. Um, so what I've done is basically, again, these are some examples, but what I did is I took my master plan that we have. And kind of uh, meshed, if you will, some of the bigger topics. And put them into like items, if that makes sense. And then have put them into short-term, mid-term and long-term goals. And so again, these are, these are some samples of these. But these goals are identified as short-term goals because they focus on fun, foundational improvements. That can be initiated and achieved relatively quickly to enhance operation, efficiency, safety and accountability. The short-term goals also lay the groundwork for sustainable, long-term improvements. By establishing best practices, enhancing immediate safety and creating clear financial structures. Our midterm goals, um, as you saw, the first ones would be like one to three years. Um, as we refer to probably as some low hanging fruit. These will probably take us five to, three to five years. These goals are identified as short-term because they focus on foundational improvements. That can be initiated and achieved relatively quickly to enhance operational effect. Excuse me, I'm on the wrong slide here. Groundhog Day. These goals here are identified as midterm because they require substantial planning. Resource allocation and infrastructure development. Making the, them less feasible for immediate implementation, but crucial for sustained growth and operational effectiveness. Each of these goals determine a well-structured approach and resources that may take years to fully implement. And yield long-term benefits for the fire department and the community. Our long-term goals, um, again, going to be five years plus. And each of these long-term goals involves complex processes, significant resources and organizational changes. Making them feasible and effective over long-term horizon. We are excited to shape our fire department to represent efficiency, effectiveness and sustainability. Positioning it to serve our community with the highest standards. By investing in targeted training, modernized facilities and community center programs. We're creating a department that is resilient and adaptable. This journey marks a commitment to both our dedicated personnel and the community. Promising a future where safety, innovation and responsiveness are at the forefront of our mission. The progress ahead will ensure our fire department is well-prepared to protect and support the community for years to come. So basically in summary, like, like I, I prefaced with all this. We will be taking the findings and the recommendations from the master plan and updating our strategic plan with those. Um, again, it will align with the city's strategic plan and the mission of the city. Uh, but it's going to be a lot more detailed than the city's plan because it's going to be specific to our department. And so we will be updating that living document. But most importantly, we're going to be prioritizing what we're going to try to accomplish. Um, but that doesn't mean that we don't start the short-term goals along with starting long-term goals, right? We have to start them probably concurrent. It's just going to take much longer for us to get those long-term goals accomplished. For example, uh, we, if we have to updating the policies or standard operating guidelines, we can do that pretty much overnight on, in some cases. But it doesn't mean that we don't start the talks on the facility. That's going to take us a long time as, as we brought up uh, in the prior conversation. How, it's an unfunded uh, capital expense, right? How do we fund it? So we gotta, we gotta get strategic on how we're doing that. Um, if we kick that can down the road, then this long-term goal starts in five years and ends in ten to fifteen. That's, that's not going to be uh, very effective. So um, all of these goals, as far as I'm concerned, on the fire department's side will start immediately. It's just a matter of us running them out and rolling them out according to priority. And um, you know, and the resources and funding and, and, and the things that are in place to make sure we can complete them. With that, um, that is basically then in my presentation, like I said, I just wanted to provide the next steps on, on our master plan. And welcome any questions?
Any questions? Um, primarily, I think on, on tonight's presentation, although I know Councilmember Garcia wasn't here last week. So if there were questions on last week's broader discussion, happy to entertain that. But I don't know that we need to rehash things that we talked about last week.
Thank you. You all did a good job. I watched the, watched the uh, the meeting and great report and uh, can't remember the individual from AP Triton. But from being on the phone, he really did uh, did a great job at presenting um, his, his part. So I just, just want to say kudos to the, it's a different, different type of analysis that we're seeing from the fire, the police department. Completely different scope and way we look at it, but just want to.
If I may take the opportunity on that, uh, Councilmember Garcia is, you're absolutely right, it's different. Um, the reason that I believe it's different and the reason we stepped off into this venture is again, um. Over a hundred years of service as a fire department to the city, but we're only five years into the current model of a full-time career department. Um, so in, in all honesty, we're in the infant stages, right? We are building this new version of the fire department.
And that's why you've got more questions.
That's, that's, that's great. I welcome it because there, there is a lot of layers to this onion that we have to peel back and take a look at. But again, um, we, we are not to the full capability of our department yet. And therefore I know we talk about maintaining the services. Um, and I, I would equate that to the services that are forward-facing to the community. When we answer the call for nine-one-one, uh, those, those services aren't going to change. They're going to look like they do today. But we do have to basically enhance our department's capabilities on things as far as uh, support administration. And those are the things that offer us the ability to bring in additional programs. For instance, education to the public on wildfire and mitigations and home hardening. And all the things that are, are just in, you know, in the, at the back of everybody's minds and in the, in the front of everybody's minds really, right? Um, we have a lot of work to do, uh, but with the resources we have, as our master plan stated, we're right-sized for operations. That doesn't mean we're right-sized for all the programs and all of the legislations and mandates and everything else that we have to do. People that we have hired, they answer the calls, they train, they do some inspections, but they're not really hired to do all of the other functions that we really got to do. So um, again, as um, Chief Barrianto said, we got to right-size for what's, what Sierra Madre's version of this is. Um, and that's going to be the strategic part that we got to go to, right? Perfect world, we'll have everybody we need. Um, but we all know that we're, we're resource-strapped. So we got to find out what can we put into place with what we have.
Can I ask a question about that? So we talked about collateral, not collateral, um. Uh, what is the word that I'm looking for with the PD? I'm not support systems, but different, um, I guess collateral duties. You guys do so many collateral duties too, from what we've seen. Your captains are doing jobs of what like say a battalion chief would do in terms of prevention, in terms of inspections, things like that. Would it be beneficial to have the same model where you guys can log those hours, those CAD times that you're doing inspections? That you're logging in the times, the amount of time you're spending? Not just doing training, of course, which I know you already log, but also doing all these other extra collateral duties that you guys take on?
Not to say that I, I can't see the benefit of that, um, but what I would kind of equate it to in, in, in the difference from, and. The example that was given from the police department's side is the collateral duties that you spoke of are really programs. That need to be managed. So there's not a, like a CAD event for that. They are, for instance, fire prevention. That is a whole division within itself that is a program.
What about when you guys go on a inspection?
That, those are logged. Those are absolutely logged.
Okay.
Um, but we, we take those as part of our normal events and our normal duties. Uh, we will have company inspections that we do and, and they log that in. Those are tracked.
So when you guys go to the park and you have fire prevention day, that's logged into the CAD. When you go to the wellness fair, you log, log that into the CAD as doing education?
No, with those we do not. Um, our guys, again, they remain available, they'll answer the call if it comes out um, to us. That's just part of it. We didn't, our, our assessment, if you will, did not dive into that. Um, i- it's more on the fact of the collateral duties that the folks are doing. They're, they're involved in programs or other divisional work. For instance, uh, you know, if it's EMS or fire prevention or training, those are typically, you'll see division chiefs. Running and managing those programs.
Well, we don't have.
For lack of a better term, they're departments within a department. Um, and they have to be operated as such because they are the support functions, just as we have here in the city. Through IT and admin and human resources, they, they support all the functions that we do, right? Within our department, we have those entities as well that support the operations. So um, that's what, that's what we refer to more as collateral duties.
Could we look at adding that in order to help with our prevention? We're looking at all of our residents with their fire insurance. And one thing that we learned from our seminars that we've all went to last couple of weeks. One is the Firewise program, which our, our citizens are doing. That's a program. The other part is a fire risk reduction community. We have to apply for that and it, we can't apply for it, you know, you apply every two years and they just sealed it. So we'd have to apply in two years. But part of that is, is showing the actual hours and the education that you've done with your community. So I would think that that might be a good thing to add to our strategic plan or your strategic plan. To show that um, we qualify as a fire risk reduction community, therefore lowering the insurance rates of our community. By logging those hours in and showing that we've already done these things, these things and these things.
In, in my opinion, I think it would help and it would assist, but I don't think it gets us to the finish line. Uh, again, that's a program that we would have to implement, not only to get us to that finish line, but to keep us in the race. We have, we, we don't just get that once and we're done, right? We're going to have to make sure that we have a program in place that includes education, enforcement, all these things, right? That, that, that we're reaching out to the community on and getting them involved by, again, in, in, enforcing if we have to, but mostly ed- through education. Um, and I kind of alluded to it last, last week when I spoke. If I'm having my operations folks do that, their suppression folks or the EMS folks doing that. That takes away from their responsibilities as far as training. Um, as far as getting their certifications up to date, as far as doing their company inspections, doing the things that they need to do and answering the calls. Um, if I set, if I take one person away and give them a collateral duty of fire prevention and they're sitting in front of a keyboard. Trying to take care of that, that particular topic, then their team on the engine, the other two, they're, they're not accomplishing any team efforts. They're not out training together, not, because I got a person sitting over there, right? So to that point is, is what I'm trying to do is if I can get right-size for Sierra Madre. Um, and potentially bring in a full-time person. We've always in my history here had a, had full-time people in fire prevention. That was, that was the only paid position for the longest time. Now we have nobody on full-time staff over there. Um, is to at least get somebody over there that will run that program. Cause it serves a multitude of, of, of things. They can check plans all day, every day, all week, not just on a Friday when the public can't even get in here. They can go out and do inspections, they can go out and educate, they can go to the schools, they can bring forth all of these, all the stuff. Firewise community, fire safe council, they could be a liaison to them. Building, building the, the complete resiliency within Sierra Madre to include public safety and the community. Um, again, it's a program, it has to be managed and it can't be done effectively with what we have.
And I didn't mean to add work to you. That wasn't my, my question. My question's not to add the job, it's to actually what you're already doing right down that hour.
And, and that's why I said, I, I think it helps, but it doesn't get us to the finish line. I think having a, a complete program is what gets us, right? By somebody, if we're going to put in that, the, the request to become a, a Firewise community, right? And, and help our residents hopefully with their insurance. Um, if we showed the bigger grandiose picture of what, here's what we're doing for our community by, by actually making it a program. And having that interaction and that engagement with our community, that's going to get us there. Not just necessarily log in a few hours here and there from, from collateral duty staff.
But I think that the question is, or the point maybe is. All of the things that you're talking about, it sounds like, you know, even just the application itself, you know, to, to, to apply at this, in this two-year program. Requires staffing. And so, you know, and, and you, you mentioned financing, you know, public, uh, a new, a new public safety building or, you know, facilities. You know, finding a grant, managing a grant requires personnel hours, requires a person. And so I, I guess my question is, or my observation that you can validate. Um, is that right now you are staffed sufficiently on the operational side to. Provide the, the level of service that we need to provide to keep our residents safe. And to, you know, maintain the mandates and the reporting that you need to do. But that, pretty much outside of that, every minute takes away from those, those, those operational and, and um, compliance duties. Is that correct?
That's a, that's a fair uh, summary of it, yes. Um, but in reference to the master plan as well, they do allude to a potential of an over-hire, right? Cause they also mentioned that we do not, even though we are. Because they also mentioned that we do not, even though we are currently staffed, fully staffed on the books and we will, we have no issues mitigating any of the calls that we have. We don't have resiliency built into our staffing. As we spoke to earlier, if we, for instance, pandemic hits again, we had multitude of people out, right? So that understaffs us immediately. Vacations, industrial disabilities, maternity leave, whatever you want to put in there, that now puts us in the same situation. Anybody leaves for another, another job, that puts us in the same situation. So there are opportunities that we look, we're going to have to look at, right, strategically. Will it make sense to even go down the road of, do we over-hire? Do we put a fourth person on the engine? These are things that we would like to see, that would make it optimal, but we got to see if it's the right fit and if we can, if we can pull it off, to be honest with you. That would be my suggestion, yes. Put a fourth person on the engine. There's so many benefits to that. Can we do it? Is it a priority with everything else we got to do in the city? That's, that's what we still have to do. But my recommendations will always be that, a hundred percent. And so hopefully that kind of answers it, right? And we also don't have the supporter, the admin to do all the functions that we need to do as well. So that came out very clear in the master plan as well. Basically, it's myself doing all this with my analyst, plugging in where she can kind of deal. But mostly it's answering phones, doing emails, running next door, taking payments, doing all the, quite a lot of actually an admin assistant type of function. So again, what is the right size for us? We got to, we got to dive into that and find out.
Other questions?
Two.
Sure. Mary put in.
The first one is a really simple one. On your fourth slide up there, under community outreach programs, it said expand CRR. I'm sorry, I, I'm blanking at this hour. What's CRR?
Yes, I tried to make sure that I put that up in the prior slide and I just abbreviated after. So that would be community, community risk reduction.
Okay. There it is. I see it on the second slide.
And so that is, for me, that's going to incorporate quite a bit. I would like to have a person in place that's in charge of all that. But that is not only fire prevention. I'm going to expand that umbrella a little bit to be anything. Community risk reduction, right? We go on a lot of EMS calls. Sixty-eight percent of our calls are EMS. What is the number one call? Probably falls. How do we get out and educate our senior community on how to not fall as much? Do we remove rugs out of their homes? Do we, you know, how do we do some stuff? Do we make sure that they have a walking device next to them, right? Those are some of the, the community risk reduction things that we can encompass in. It's, it's a broader focus than just fire prevention. Fire prevention is least, or fires are least common, could be more, more damaging with one incident. However, we also want to get the more frequent calls that we get. And hopefully we, you know, like, don't put ourselves out of business, but we run less calls because people are more educated and we've been able to outreach to folks. So that would be our community risk reduction. It would be all-encompassing.
Got it. I think you hinted at this last week, but do you have a strategic plan?
Yes, yes.
What's the status of that plan?
It, status as always is going to be a living document. Started in two thousand twenty-two is when we put it together for the current model of the department. And we've, we've accomplished quite a bit off of there. But again, that is going to be updated with our new master plan. So it's really like, for example, I had in there, I have different categories, staffing being one of them. Originally, I identified maybe battalion chiefs as part of a strategic plan of implementation. With everything since then, we're talking two more years down the road, looking at the, at the landscape with the master plan, I no longer see that as what we're looking to do in the near future. So I may implement putting in a community risk reduction person into my staffing goals as well. But it is broken down into staffing. It's broke, as far as prevention, technology, infrastructure, pretty much everything that's outlined in the master plan, I have those as topics and we have some goals underneath that are broken down into measurable, achievable type of goals as well. And timelines and even some associated funding or necessary funds to accomplish those, whether it's going to be staff time or, or we're going to have to hire a consultant, whatever the case is. But yes, we do have it in place.
So you, do you plan to update that master plan based on, excuse me? Do you plan to update the strategic plan based on the output of the master plan?
Yes, yes.
Madam Mayor?
Please.
Just to kind of bring it back to staffing, just so I can grab my head around kind of what Chief's been saying here. So this individual that you're talking about, potentially, is that more of an admin position or more of like a deputy chief-type position? Would it be more management or administration that you're kind of envisioning?
The answer is yes. And I'll explain why. Again, right sizing for Sierra Madre. Ideally, according to the master plan, their, their recommendations are for me to have basically a second person. I'm the only department head in this city that I'm aware of that does not have a second. Police Department, Public Works, everybody has a second somehow. I don't have one. That is a necessary step for me, to be honest with you, right? That, that person could take over operations, run operations, handle personnel issues, deal with scheduling, apparatus, equipment, all that kind of stuff. Well, I do my job and look to the future and try to, try to become the visionary on what we're going to do and how we're going to make this thing sustainable, along with taking care of everything and making sure that I oversee the, you know, the complete workings. That being said, we also need somebody next door. Can we marry the two together perhaps? That might be an option, right? But again, we got to look at this, prioritize it and see where it is. Do we bring somebody in that maybe can hold that kind of level of position? Whether it's a deputy, an assistant, or even somebody that we call a divisional chief, but now has that management role to help oversee and could step in at the same time? These are just some of the, some of the thoughts, right? There's, there's a couple of ways to peel back the sign and then look at the different layers. And that's the fun part of it. It's going to be what do we think is going to fit and what are we able to pull off?
So you, how do you take a vacation? I'm half joking.
With a phone right next to me. It does not, it doesn't end.
And so on the other end of things, right, thinking about staffing, I know it's been discussed for years now whether or not we put four on the engine or not. But if four on the engine means three more, three new hires, or does that, like as far as the model's concerned, because they're living together for days at a time, can someone flex and not always be four and they can kind of move through platoons? Or does that really not work as far as the, kind of the dynamics of firefighting and how you guys work together in platoons and not, not just kind of like filling shifts usually? Like who would want to be that person, right?
Correct. Great question. And some of the things that I thoroughly enjoy about my job, right, is the creativity, right? There's a lot of ways that we can, we can address some of the needs that we see. That could be one of them. The other one is, right, right now LA County Department of Health Services is running pilot programs. Where on their ambulances, they do what they refer to as a one-on-one. So it's one paramedic, one EMT. I hope that program goes forward. I think we're the only ones, only county that doesn't implement this. Where I'm looking is if we can get something like that going in now, we can take our reserve program, which are free. I failed to mention that last time we talked about volunteers. We have volunteers through our reserves. We can now maybe look at trying to bring them in on a stipend of some sort to work a shift where they're that person on that ambulance that is the EMT. And then we take one of those paramedics and put them over on the engine. Now we got four in the engine. We didn't increase staffing really besides hiring, basically our reserves into a, call it an ambulance operator type of, you know, it's, it's a promotion, but it's also something that will feed into our program. We can now look to recruit from there as well. So there's a lot of ways that we can maybe look at trying to do something like this.
So we still have four medics on a call and just one's an EMT, right? That's.
Yes. Yes. And in some cases, you would have five medics on a, on a, on a call. Pretty much, our whole department right now, we only have one EMT that's on the floor. And so with that, actually, great news is, we're going to be transitioning our engine into a medic engine, which we're still trying to figure out the, how many people are, but there's, we might be one of the only two agencies in Verdugo that will be able to do that. And so that is going to be an enhanced service to our community. For example, if we get an ALS call and we have to transport with our ambulance, that takes our medic service out of, even though we have paramedics on the engine currently, we're now transitioning to where those paramedics will have all equipment necessary, all narcotics, all supplies, the same as it's on the ambulance, to execute their level of service in the field. They won't be able to transport until we get an ambulance on there. But no longer will we basically be doing BLS level of service. That engine will be able to do ALS. So we've, we've put that into place. We've got DHS coming out next couple of weeks, I think it is, on the 12th. And by the 15th, we should hopefully have that in service. So it's a model we're going to look at. Calls will go up, I'm sure, because nobody else around here has it, Arcadia Pasadena doesn't have it. That's the beauty of us being all paramedics where they're not. So we'll, we'll take a look at it and we're going to keep a close eye on it. If the calls for service go up exceeding what we are doing here, then we may need to see if it's viable. But I, I'm excited that it's going to be a high, much higher opportunity for us to serve this, this community with our own staff serving the community with advanced life support. So these are some of the things that we're just trying to, trying to do. But putting a fourth paramedic on there would be even better.
And like regarding burnout, let's say we had, let's say we had four. Let's say somebody has to take some time off. We, we could, we've shown that we can run three. So we don't, we don't need to bring someone in to work, you know, back, you know, back-to-back, you know, forty hours, forty-eight hour shifts or anything like that.
Again, if we, if we went to four, it would be ideal in a multitude of things. Just for instance, on the EMS side, right, if we have to do full cardiac arrest, more hands better. If we're doing a structured fire, we have to have so many people on scene to handle this. For instance, a two-in, two-out, that means we can't go in and attack the fire unless we have the equal amount of two people outside to pull them out in case. With three people, we can't technically initiate that right away. So there's those things as well. But to your point is if we have four on there, yes, we can, we can minimal staff at three. That's where we're at now. We can't go below that. But then we would also have to look at and meet and confer with, with the association, right? Because if we're hiring these people and we're saying we're now staffed with instead fifteen, but eighteen, there, there may be those, those talks that we have to have with the associations.
Thank you.
To follow up on the conversation you were having with respect to the, you know, the medic program, are there instances now where we do not perform transport because we don't have the backup that, you know, that you were, you were describing on, on the truck? Such that if we were to move to that, we would feel more comfortable doing increased transport? And where I'm going with that is obviously with transport, there's some cost recovery and revenue generation. So would you view that as also potentially being revenue generating? Because maybe we would be more apt to do the transport because we would have the backup services on, on the, on the fire truck?
I got to say, thank you so much for these questions. These are, these are awesome. These are just, you're throwing me up softballs. Yes, this is how I, that we as the fire department are trying to see how we can make ourselves sustainable, right? We're not in the business of making money, right? We're not a for-profit organization, but there is cost recovery and there is opportunity out there for us to bring in revenue. So what we can do with this is, is it is where I'm seeing the starting point perhaps of being able to do things like that. We do currently have where if our ambulance transports a patient from our city and the next call comes in, our engine may go because they didn't go on the transport, but they are not going to provide the paramedic interventions, if you will. They will absolutely be part of the call. They will do assessments. They will do whatever treatments and therapies they can. But when it comes to narcotics or certain medic-level skills, they can, they, they are limited to what's on the engine, if that makes sense. With this, they will have that on there. So to answer your question, we may well have to get the assistance, obviously, for the transport from Arcadia Pasadena. Whoever's the closest resource available could come all the way from South Pasadena. But they will in turn get that revenue for that transport. We won't.
Right.
With being able to, one of the visions that I have as well is we have, we have two ambulances. One sits in there as a reserve. I'm looking at the possibility of putting that thing in service. And you'll see, within our master plan, they, they pick out our most frequent days and hours of operation. Do we bring this thing in for twelve hours a day during so many hours, so many days of the week? And staff that again with what we're referring to as ambulance operators? Call it a BLS ambulance. But now again, we can, if, if the call is not ALS, we can now put, take our patient's BLS, leaving our medics in place for that next call. And we get, we get revenue for the transport of a BLS call. In return, we can also, if need be, take our medics off of the engine and put them on the ambulance to assist and follow up on that transport to get another ALS if we, if we need be. So really, it's, it's, it's offering us the ability to do like consecutive calls, servicing our own community with our own staff and potentially bringing in revenue. Right now, we're, we're in the neighborhood of about six hundred thousand dollars on EMS transports per year. We bring in about twenty percent of our budget every year. I don't know of any other department that really does that besides maybe planning. I'm looking at the opportunity to increase that. If we can put in another ambulance and service, yes, it'll take maybe some additional funds from the general fund to staff that. But I think it's a cost recovery and a much higher service for the community. So these are all the things that, that I toy with and I'm trying to see what we can do to do our due diligence to make sure that, again, we're sustainable, right? That we're just not going off of general fund money. We're looking at ways to increase our capabilities and, and offset those costs as well.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much, especially for the, coming back again.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Okay, so open up for public comment on that agenda item.
Madam Mayor, there are no speaker cards for this item, nor did the city clerk's office receive emails.
Thank you. Okay, so I will bring it back to discussion. And as we discussed previously, I think we'll may have a combined discussion of our two agenda items.
I'll start.
Go ahead.
So these are really helpful documents and they're really detailed. I mean, like each one is more than three hundred pages. So they're, it's clear that both organizations, internal and external, did a lot of work in trying to look at what's best for the city and where we need to go in the future. So that, that's fantastic. I, I've got to admit, I've, I've come up to speed quite a bit on police and fire, but there's still a lot of this that is, I'm out of my depth in. I think it kind of, my thoughts on it, and what I, what I really like is I like the master plan that the fire department has, has put together. And a strategic plan. Thank you so much. The strategic plan that the fire department's put together. And a pairing of the strategic plan and the master plan is something that I think is, is really helpful. It helps, at least it helps me to think about, okay, how are they taking all of this, this information, these recommendations, and making it fit Sierra Madre? Our needs, our budget, our culture, so that, that we can implement it. So to me, having one without the other is, doesn't, isn't that helpful? It's kind of hard to, to take it and act on it, from at least from a city council perspective.
Anyone else's thoughts, reaction to that before we move on?
I guess just reiterating exactly what you're saying. It makes it understandable even for a layperson to understand the structure and the complexity of how the inner working of both departments go. And especially the changes and what's happened in both departments. From, continue with community policing and community fire services, but also the changes that have happened since we had chiefs from thirty years ago. We had Chief Bailey all the way to now with Chief Barrientos. And the positive changes our city have made, and this, this master plan really points out that. that, both plans actually, that we're on the right track, that we've made good changes. We haven't been dinged on things like a lot of departments have. And, and I think that's why we've kept a lot of our insurance, for the fire department's insurance rating, they get a in a rating of a, you know, an ABC type rating, and I think that we are one of those cities where I really see our public love our police officers and our firefighters. And I, I think that's rare and hard to find these days, and I think it's because of, of the implementation of all the policies and, and the actions that they all take. And this, these master plans both reiterate all the great things we're doing, and then they're pointing out those things, okay, in order to maintain this, for our city to stay safe, these are some changes you might have to make because looking at the future, you can't do this anymore. You'll have to have this, or like our facilities. You know, since nineteen seventy-six when we had both the stations together, and even before that, both the stations were together down on the boulevard, down the street. And we saw a change and a need to move forward then, and now it's that time, we're seeing that it's time to move forward. Let's not push this down the road again. So I think this is a great opportunity as our council to really move forward with these two master plans that will affect how our city deals with public safety, looking at the future. And looking at our strategic plan and, and changing that to adapt and, and continue what we're doing well.
Go ahead. Ms. Councilor Goss.
I, I don't know that I have a whole lot to add to that. I think these are outstanding documents in terms of providing the public and us with insights into how police departments are run and should be run, and how fire departments should, are run and should be run. And I'm really proud of where we're at right now with both departments. I think we're doing great. But it's clear that the, the professionals that came in and served as consultants to this see that the future means we're gonna have to change, make, make changes. We're gonna have to make adjustments. We're gonna make additions. We're gonna have to transform ourselves again. And that's gonna require a lot of buy-in by the public. It's gonna require a buy-in by our councils. And it's gonna require additional resources. And so that's a, kind of the, ever since I've been on the council, it's always been kind of the, the constant refrain, you know, the, well, yeah, you gotta pay for it, right? So, but I, I really, really, I told the chief last week after his presentation that I thought I knew something about fire, firing, after I read through that whole thing, heard what he had to say. I really got some insights into some of the things you folks have to deal with. And, and I want, I think, I, I, I know I'm like everyone else up here. We just wanna make it work for you. We wanna make it work for our firefighters and our police. We want you guys to have the best we can afford. We want you to have all the support we can give you. I heard council member Lo say that our fire and police are, are liked or loved, and I think that is true. I think we have a great symbiosis between our police department, our fire department, and the public. And that wasn't always the case. When I first got on the council, that wasn't really the case. So, so kudos to where we're at. I think the, I'm not, I'm not sure what we're gonna do with these master plans. I, I don't have a problem with approving them as is, but I think we need to be careful about making promises in terms of trying to get everything accomplished in these master plans. They both have very high levels of expenditure in the future that, you know, that's, that's subject to a lot of, you know, imponderables, a lot of variability. But I think these are plans that I can sign on to. Why wouldn't I? I'm not the professional. They are, and I think they've made a good case.
Do you mind, just 'cause I, what I was gonna say dovetails really well with, with what council member Goss just said. I, I agree with, I mean, certainly in terms of the assessment that the consultants provided, I am in agreement with what everyone has said. I mean, it's a really heartening thing to see that you bring somebody in from the outside and, and their assessment is that, given our size and our limited resources, that we are really in a great spot, and that, that is very heartening, and that's something that's great to hear. And obviously, they've, they've made lots of recommendations to maintain a lot of the cultural aspects as well as, as, as move forward as, as policing and fire service develops and, and changes. I guess I, where I would differ is I actually am uncomfortable with the, the notion of adopting these documents as master plans, as the city council adopting them, because in both presentations we've heard, last week, this week, the discussion that we've had, you know, both chiefs talked very clearly about taking these, and I guess the way I would think about it is these, these, these documents seem to be more like assessments and, and sort of source material type, type documents, and both chiefs talked about taking the information provided here and making it, you know, customizing it for Sierra Madre and figuring out how to take the information and implement it. And I guess from my perspective as to our role as council, I feel like I would be more comfortable adopting, you know, in the formal sense of the word, that implementation, because that is something I can understand. Like, like I think folks have said, like, I don't, you know, recommendation one hundred and twenty-three of the, the police one, I, I don't probably even know what that means necessarily. And so I, I don't know if I can adopt it, but what I do know is I trust our leadership and I trust our chiefs to take what is there and, and derive the value out of it and put it into a plan, you know, over a number of phases. Both, both chiefs talked about that. And that to me is what I would feel like we should be adopting per se. I'm, I'm happy to say, to put our stamp of approval, whatever that looks like, you know, on these reports, you know, as guiding documents as, you know, there's obviously been a lot of money and, and time put into these documents, so I don't wanna minimize that, but to me, they are not adoptable policy. I guess I would, I would say it that way. That, that just not sort of, doesn't, doesn't seem to me that they're function. And so when I sort of see on the proposed, you know, action item to adopt them as a master plan, that just makes me uncomfortable, 'cause I just don't feel like that's the format that they're in, and that's really what our role is.
Madam Mayor, yeah, to your point, I'm,
Please.
Same, same thing. I had, I had issues with that. And as I read both resolutions, twenty-four sixty-two and twenty-four sixty-seven, you know, the final whereas makes me a little more comfortable that adopting both of these, the assessment and the plan as, as a strategic document to guide the department's future development and services. They both say that. Not saying we're adopting this as the plan, rather as a strategic guide. Makes me more comfortable with, with the adoption. And I don't, I don't know if that helps you, but helps me a little bit.
I feel like that's, but that, to me, that would, that's all I would say, frankly. I mean, that, that's frankly what I would propose. If, if we, once we get to that proportion, I would propose that that be the resolution essentially, just that action item. But, you know, I'm, I'm happy to hear other folks.
I'm extremely comfortable with that. I, I really didn't wanna give the wrong impression. I, I, I understand exactly what you're saying, Madam Mayor, the, the, as a, a kind of a, a guiding light for our departments and our city. I see this, I see this is, this is really good, but I agree that putting our stamp of approval on it in terms of future commitments across the board, I think we're not in a position to do that.
Yeah, and I think both our chiefs articulated very well that they both know what's right for Sierra Madre at this given time, right? And those are our current chiefs, and I don't wanna see either of them go anywhere. But things happen, right? And so, yeah, I think to your point, we need to be careful about adopting something that if somebody else does come in ten years from now, or whatever it might be, that this document does not offer promises, yet it's, but it is, it is a guiding document because somebody new might not understand Sierra Madre as well when they first come, come on board.
Well, and the other example I was gonna give is that, you know, even in, in Chief Barrientos's, you know, chart, he's actually designated, you know, a handful of the recommendations as sort of not applicable or not really,
Exactly.
not really meaningful in his, in his view. And, you know, that may change at some point in the future. But, I mean, that, I guess, to me is illustrative of why I think it's, I would prefer to take the approach that we're discussing, just because, you know, if he doesn't think they're needed, I, I certainly am not gonna say that I adopt those, you know.
Yeah, yeah. And just another comment. It's refreshing to know that, you know, we know how resource strapped we are. We know the, the problems we've had with recruitment. But now we're, we're, we're fully staffed and to read both of these, the assessment and the plan to see, it's basically, you know, I'm, I'm, the consultants are telling us, you're doing really, really, really well for what you have. So I, I think not just the chiefs, but, but staff, both of those departments should pat themselves on the back because they, they've accomplished something that probably shouldn't be, they shouldn't be able to accomplish given the resources. So that was very refreshing to see. You know, you always worry that, wow, you guys are really screwing up here. You're not doing this right. And there, there really is none of that. It's like, here's aspirationally what you should move towards is what I, what I read in these documents. So that's just a comment I wanted to make that very pleased to see what an outside agencies or outside consultants had seen within our two, these two departments and have felt as though, yeah, you guys are doing great, given what you have.
That's exactly, that's probably what more, better articulated than what I said. And I, I guess my only, you know, counter to that is that I do see some yellow caution lights about resiliency, I think is the way that Chief Bartlett put it, which I think is, is good, is that we are fully staffed for the, for the public safety facing, public facing purposes, but we do not have resiliency built into that staffing such that any hiccup, you know, whether it's staffing, whether it's a, you know, multiple events at once, you know, we are not fully staffed for those kind of contingencies, and these organizations are such that, you know, those contingencies are more likely to happen than in, you know, other, other, other departments because their, their whole purpose is to function in times of potential emergency.
Yeah, I know. Two retirements and one person moving to another state for some reason, that, that could cause all kinds of chaos in our departments.
Or your chief retiring and you have no one to fill in his position.
No succession plan, yeah.
Mayor Creeps, could I just make a clarification, since I've heard the concern about making promises through this document? Is that the legal power of these documents is just policy-based? It's just a guiding document? It does not bind the city council at all for any actions in the future?
That's very helpful. Thank you.
And Deputy City Attorney, so I wasn't at the last meeting, and Chief Bartlett from the fire side only gave basically a supplement as to what he talked about. Am I, am I okay to vote on this, or should I, on the fire side, should I abstain?
Yes, you're, you're okay to vote on this, especially since I heard you, you listened to the last discussion, so you've been caught up on the, the discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Yesterday?
Last, last week.
Last week. We could go tonight, yeah.
Yeah, last meeting. I'm happy to make a motion that basically, you know, is, is limited to the, the final action, you know, the final action item in the, in the proposed resolution. That's what I would propose to, we do, but before I make that, I wanna make sure that we're all. So I will go ahead and make, I don't have the resolution in front of me.
Um, there you go.
Oh, this, the actual resolution.
Oh.
Sorry. Thank you.
I have it. For this version?
This version? I don't think it's different than this one, is it?
Mayor, if we're looking to edit the resolution, then I recommend bringing it back to the next meeting as edited, so we can vote on.
Oh, okay.
If, if there are substantial edits.
I, I think it's just actually just limiting it, but yeah, so I mean, if that's, if that's what you think procedurally, I, I think that, that's fine. We probably would put it on consent.
Go ahead and delineate your edits and, and we can see how, how much the resolution has changed.
'Cause as it's written, it already is just a guiding policy guidelines. It's not tying anybody to do any actions. It's not actionable.
Correct.
I guess my, I guess, going back to my earlier comment, I guess it's, it's the verb adopts. So maybe it's more that we are approving them as a source document for the development of our department's respective strategic plans? And, and maybe that's not meaningfully different enough to, to warrant having to bring them back, but I'm also fine having, bringing them back. We could probably just put it on consent.
But it's also wouldn't be the same as our wildlife plans and our other plans, where we have adopted those as guidelines, as towards policy?
I think those, but tho- those to me feel more like implementation. Like our wildlife plan has sort of, you know, steps to implement, you know, various.
And, and I can add too that the council is free to send these documents back for revision so that they look more like implementation or strategic documents as you envision them?
I mean, it sounds like both of our departments are working on strategic plans. And I guess the question is, do we want to then have them maybe have those strategic plans attach these documents as, you know, appendices? Or, you know, sort of the source documents that they could refer to in the strategic plan as being, you know, foundational documents on which information was derived?
Well, my, my thinking was, was going on it. And, and I mean, the downside on that is that delays it a little bit further.
But I, I mean, I think they have guidance. I mean, I think it's been clear that we are all supportive of the types of, of conclusions and types of recommendations that have been put forth in these plans. And it seems, you know, we're all, you know, maybe the direction is for them, for each department to continue to work on their strategic plan, bring that forward for adoption, you know, using, using these as, you know, as, as resources.
Do we have to bring it back if we just change the verbiage on approved resolution twenty-four dash sixty-two, approving the Sierra Madre Fire Department Master Plan as a guiding document? Do we have to go?
No, that, that would be
That would be okay?
similar enough to the current resolution.
Yeah, as a guiding document for the, for the development of the department's strategic plan.
We're not changing anything in the wording of the resolution except for the verbiage of the approval.
If we're adding, you know, making these guiding documents for the, the creation of the strategic plan, then I think that, that does change it.
I feel like, I feel like the spirit where, is that we are, policy-wise, we're in agreement with what is said here.
But here's the problem.
We're not saying it's, we're adopting these documents, but policy-wise, as the, the five of us that are elected to be the voice of the public, we feel as though these are good policies for our constituents.
I mean, I guess like, of course, do we have to take action at all? I'm sorry, go ahead.
If we do that, and we change city council, we change city manager, we change everybody, and they don't do strategic plans the exact same way, and they have a different order of doing business, then that wouldn't, wouldn't, these aren't policies for whatever their actionable items are. Now they're just mute, because let's say the next city manager and the next city council don't like using strategic plans the same way. Now you've just, this has just been voided, because we specifically said it's for using for the strategic plan. So that's why I'm saying, can we just say it's as guidelines? Instead of being as specific. 'Cause I want this to be a living document for as long until we do another one.
Well, this isn't gonna be a living document. This, this is, this is, this is, these are recommendations as a
Used as a living document for the next span of time for them to be able to do plans, or whoever may be in council, whoever may be in city manager, whoever their chiefs might be.
So, so, so instead of maybe specifically referencing the strategic plan, you maybe it's guiding documents for the
Fire department?
For the development of, of the, of the departments.
Not even development, for the fire department and the police department. 'Cause if you say the development, that, I don't know.
I don't know. I know, I know we're starting to like, start wordsmithing, but I think if, if, to me, it's like if we say we approve this master plan for purposes of the fire department, to me, that's approving the master plan. And then, then I think we're kind of back to where I started at least.
And to me, I don't see the master plan as a living document. I see it as a snapshot in time. I see it as, this is where we are with our current resources, with our current operations, with our current facilities, with our current equipment. And it's a really good one. It's a really detailed one. But to me, i- if we wanna go towards a living document, a living document is a strategic plan.
Yeah, exactly.
And, and to me, you know, if someone, if, if a new city manager comes in or a new council comes in and they wanna change and not use strategic plans, that's fine, but that's a new ordinance, right? That's, that, or that's a new resolution.
Then this won't count, and this is supposed to be good for about like twenty years, it sounds like, with our departments. 'Cause we've had a fire master plan twenty years ago. We've had a police
I mean, I, I would suggest that our, our plan of doing this twenty, every twenty years is probably not sustainable. I mean, I, you know, I think, I, I would hope that if there was a strategic plan in five to eight years, that there would be a, a appetite to update these documents, because hopefully we've implemented a number of the, uh, recommendations, and now we're looking at something different. And so we wouldn't be talking about, you know, relieving collateral duties perhaps, because we've done some restructuring to allow for that. We'd be probably looking at different challenges. So I, I hear you. I mean, I guess.
I just want them to be able to use this and not be tied down.
And I will say
They also want it approved sooner than later.
I will say that this council is not changing barring some emergency thing in the next two years, so we do have a, we do have a runway, at least on that front.
Right. Mayor, if I, I can, Chief Bartlett would like to add something.
Yes, please.
Let me just, just jump in on one thing on it.
If, if, if I may, at least on the fire side, I, I know they've been referred to as assessments, and I, I guess that could be a fair evaluation. However, our, our document is However, our, our document is a standard within our industry as a master plan. And, and also if I can bring back to your attention, we did a community risk assessment and a standards of coverage assessment. Which now gives council the ability to say, we've taken a look at the risk that our, our, our community has potential for. And we are now, we've done a plan that says, here's where we're at, here's the snapshots. Those are a lot of the recommendations that are within our plan. It's not just an assessment of staffing and everything. Excuse me. It is a snapshot in time of the big holistic picture of public safety from the fireside. So the option for adopting ours as a resolution, now it says the council has been made aware of the community risks, the standards of coverage, meaning do we have enough stations, do we have enough personnel? And you are now enlightened to make decisions based off of those, that report. So that is one of the big reasons why I brought this forth as a resolution to adopt again. And I made very specific of putting that into the very end of there as a guiding document. But again, the other two, the other two, that's why ours costs a little more as well. We got two other studies in that, in that thing. And it's, it's all within part of that master plan. So I don't know if that maybe helps with some of the decisions, at least as, as far as ours goes. Is, again, those, those two other documents embedded in the master plan bring forth to council that we have done a study and we're safe. Right? We don't need to make big changes by, by adding another fire, fire station or anything like that. So just wanted to bring that to your attention again, if it makes any difference.
Could I ask you a clarifying question? Do you see this document as setting out goals for the department or just assessment of what is going on right now with the department?
Again, as I, as I put in my presentation, this is not, this is a guiding document. It's, it's, as, as Mayor Proton said, it's a snapshot in time that I can now take. So I'm looking at it as, as a reference or a resource. I'm going to do my studies, I'm going to look at documents, I'm going to look at periodics, I'm going to look at this stuff, and I'm going to make decisions in my strategic plan that is going to guide, that is going to move the department. This is just helping me guide. It's, it's references. I can take them as recommendations or I can omit them. That's, that's me as a department head charged with making these decisions based off of feedback from stakeholders as far as council and community. So I, hopefully that, no, I don't look at it as these are set in stone. Again, they're, they're guidelines to help us.
I mean, more, within the document, does it include goals for the department that you can take or leave? But, but does the document actually include goals or just an assessment of what's?
No, like you said, I can't speak for the police departments, right? But ours did, ours did not basically break it down as an assessment. And it, it's different than, there's no strategies in there telling us how many people to hire or who to hire or who to put where. It said, take a look at your staffing. It said, take a look at your facilities. Those, those are just recommendations. Now I need to go and say, what about our facilities do we need to look at? What about our staffing do we need to look at? That's my job. That wasn't the consultant's job in, in, in our case. I'm speaking to fire department only. So that's why I say it's a guiding document that I'm going to use as a resource to help me make and form my decisions.
Chief, can you, sorry.
I'm, I'm just, I just have a clarifying question because now I'm, I'm confused a little bit on the resolutions that are at issue. Madam City Clerk, are they the same as were in last week's agenda package? Cause I think that's what I'm looking at now. And the resolution actually does not sort of frame the way we've been talking about as a guiding document. It actually says, adopts the master plan, and this is specific to fire, as the official long-term blueprint for improving, you know, a very, various functions of the fire department. So it's, the actual verbiage in the resolution as, as presented at least last week is not sort of this guiding document concept. And so I don't know, was there a change in the resolution that we're considering tonight from, as compared to last week?
The only change in the resolutions that are before you this evening are in the fire department's resolution number. The original, the original resolution number issued is different than the one that is presented to you today, but is correct in the cover sheet. It is twenty-four dash sixty-six.
Oh, okay.
So that's the only change that was made.
Okay. So I think we're talking about, I think we're all sort of talking about a change in, in, in any case. Because that, you know, sort of how we're, how we're describing it isn't exactly how it's phrased anyway.
Chief, can you, can you just give us the delineation, difference between, cause there's three doc, it's really three documents from what I hear from you. Master plan, community risk assessment, and standards of cover.
Correct.
What's, what's a master plan in your mind?
The master plan is, is, it's all encompassing. The overall vision of, not necessarily a vision, but what, what the department would, would look like if everything was in place. And, and again, a guide of how to get there, maybe what to look at. The standards of coverage takes a look at, then, and, and in that presentation as our consultant got into, that takes a look at our operations. Are we getting suited up, getting in the, in the apparatus and getting to the call on time according to industry standards? Are, is our, is our travel times within the industry standards? Are we able to assemble the, the proper amount of personnel on a certain alarm? That's the standards of coverage. And, and, and if we fell out of any of those standards, then they would made recommendations, like he said, hey, maybe we, in, in a snapshot, he was going to suggest we have the station move more towards the center of town. But then he looked at how the, the circles intertwined between our, our automatic aid partners. And they go, no, you guys are covered. I don't recommend that. So that's your standard of the coverage. Do we need additional personnel to accomplish? He, he said we're right sized for the operations. The community risk assessment, that's taking a look at, for, for instance, the number one, the, the elephant in the room are wildland urban interface. That is a big risk. So again, they, they say, hey, maybe you want to look at some programs to implement, to put in place, to help mitigate and reduce the risks. That's what they're doing in those two documents. And then that's all part of the big master plan.
Okay.
Right? As in far as we look at maybe, and I'm, this is not my job, but maybe something to, to kind of equate to is, we have a, a, a water main or water master plan, right? Which says we're going to replace so many feet at certain places and each street is going to be within a certain year or something like that. That's similar of what we're looking at. And, and it is, is it just bringing it all together.
So, so what I'm hearing from you is the, the language of adoption was more of us recognizing the latter, the latter two, the community risk assessment and the standard of cover. As far as the council recognizing that we have an understanding that we have a stand, the standard of cover, we're okay on that. Albeit maybe at a minimal. And the community risk assessment, we understand what the risks are. That's, that's why you're asking for an adoption of this. And less about the, really the master plan component, but more about those two.
Correct. From my standpoint, from my department, it's important that I make council aware of any risk within the city that I see the need that we're going to need to mitigate. This document does that. I brought that forth to you, right? Technically speaking, now you guys are, are responsible for what you know, right? And so that's where we have to now strategize and go, okay, how do we reduce these risks? How do we mitigate these and how do we do this? So in that case, my document is more than an assessment. These are, these are standard, industry standard documents and, and, and assessments, if you will, that are provided. So we can now be aware of what we know and what we're responsible for. And what, what are we going to do to mitigate these things?
Remind me of the, of the organization of the report. I don't recall off the top of my head, having looked at it last week. Are they, are they, are those three components, or at least the, the two components that we're talking about, the, the coverage and the, the risk assessment? Are those separate sections? Or are they, are they sort of weaved throughout? I forgot, I've forgotten kind of how the organization worked.
Here's the, no, that's.
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
I don't have the. I don't think I have what I've got in the table.
I could bring it up there, but if you're, if you're asking within the document itself.
They're separate.
They are highlighted as, as community risk assessment there and standards of cover.
I mean, cause I would also be mamentable to, to the chief's request of, of, you know, doing something more formal with respect to those. Because those are sort of conclusory, you know, here's our, here's what we, here's, here's what we've determined. And I'm, I'm fine sort of formally acknowledging that to be the case and, 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 you know, whatever, whatever makes the fire department feel comfortable on that. And then using this sort of guiding documentation language with respect to the other, to the rest of the report. I mean, I, I know we're getting kind of technical here, but I wa, I want to be mindful for, for what the, the chief is thinking he needs. And then also marrying that with our, you know, the concerns I'm hearing here about the interplay between sort of the master plan aspect and the implementation that will come through the strategic plan.
So what I'm wrestling with, with this is, we, we've looked at, at parallels to the water master plan or the wildlife watch plan. Those, unless I'm wrong, are plans that we've developed internally, that, that like our departments have developed, that, that we have.
Health for the Department of Wildlife helped develop the wildland.
No, no, our natural resources commission gave it as a recommendation.
Right. I mean, yes, the, 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 the state wildlife did say, this is the format we want. And this is the, this is the structure. Like we took a whole lot out of it, but it was, we wrote the plan. Like it, it was our people that wrote the plan. It was James and, and his team that, that wrote that plan. It wasn't a, an, an outside agency that, that gave the assessment of it. And, and I, and I can't remember the, the water master plan, but it seems like it's the same thing. If we start, if we're talking about the number of miles of pipe that we're going to replace, that's something that we wrote for our city. So I'm, I'm like, I'm, I'm struggling with how, like I want to accept, I want to adopt something, I want to have the, the right thing. But it, it, this seems different to me than those other things that, that have been really.
Customized?
Well, it, it, they, they've been, been developed by our departments for our needs. And that's where I, I've been trying to marry it, in my mind, marrying it to a, the strategic, their strategic plan, which I think is really helpful. Cause that's it marrying it to, to our city and our department.
What do other cities do?
It, it really depends on the size of the city and its culture, but master plans are pretty common.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ex- externally developed master plans?
Uh, yes, yes. It, and it depends on the department and, and the size of the city again. But it, it's pretty common to have at least a consultant working alongside the department, if not a consultant working by itself on the master plan.
And, and this master plan, that, that at least the fire master plan is consistent with what you've seen in other cities?
Yes. And again, it, it varies a lot by, by city and department. Um, but yes, this, it looks similar to what I've seen.
And is the police master plan similar? Cause it, it, it's a little bit different. I mean, there was more direct recommendations. There was more, you know, I, I understand what the chief is saying here is that it was much more, you should look at staffing versus you need to add X number of, of staff to it. So there's, there's a little bit different.
And that's the, that's the variation that I'm talking about.
I mean, that's, it's titled an organizational assessment, not a master plan. So I mean, that's, that's the scope of it.
Right, yeah. That's a good point. Yeah. But we're, and we're trying, and we're, part of the challenge is we're, we're trying to equate the, the two together in, in two resolutions that are very similar.
Maybe we should have discussed these separately.
We still can, but I, I guess.
We don't have to approve them the same.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. That's what I mean. I mean, I would suggest that. I, I would be comfortable adopting quote unquote, the, the fire, this is very specific to fire, the, the fire master plan, if we were to adopt it with the, you know, sort of like the guiding, the guiding language, the guiding resource type, type, type language. I, I don't think that's what the, what, what the proposed resolution says currently. So I think that we would need to be revised and it probably does change the meaning. Cause it, it would go from, you know, official long-term blueprint versus, you know, resource document or guiding document. So I think, you know, I, I, that's what I would propose we do and then bring that back. I mean, I would be comfortable with it on consent because we spent a lot of time, you know, in substantive discussion and this is just kind of wordsmithing. So that's what I would suggest. I don't know, it's like, I can, I can make that as, as a motion if people feel comfortable with that, at least on the fire side.
If we just change that one part of the language, do we have to bring it back? Can we, we've voted on other things with the, with rewording part of the resolution?
Yeah, I, I think if we, if we're just changing it to guiding document instead of.
Long-term blueprint.
Official.
Long-term blueprint.
I don't think that changes the resolution enough, but, um, what other edits are you, is, is the council looking to make, if there are?
Madam Mayor, you'd stay with adopts then?
Um, yes.
Okay.
And I, and I would hear, I'll, I'll, I'll say. I think better in writing. So I would, I would suggest honestly that the only thing that changes, cause right now it really, it reads, city council hereby adopts the fire department master plan as developed by AP Triton LLC, this is how it currently reads, as the official long-term blueprint for improving fire prevention, emergency response, public safety education, and operational efficiency within the Sierra Madre Fire Department. I would change just that reference to official long-term blueprint to something to the effect of as a guiding resource for improving fire pren, prevention, emerg, you know, et cetera, et cetera.
That, that is similar enough to vote on tonight.
I can pass this around so people can see it if that's helpful.
Does PDs have seen, see, my version of the agenda doesn't have this, or it doesn't have fire department's resolutions in it.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. A guiding resource seems a little vague to me. Guiding dark document?
Guiding document?
Yeah.
I think that's what we, what it is.
I guess I was trying to get at like the information versus the document itself, but that's probably a fine distinction. So. So he would say guiding document instead.
Document instead of guiding resource.
Yeah, I'm fine with it. You don't, you don't have the resource without the document.
Fair enough. So that's what I would, that, so I, I, I move that, um, I'm cutting it back.
Yeah.
Sorry. I move that we adopt the fire department master plan as developed by AP Triton LLC as a guiding, as a guiding document for improving fire protection, emergency response, public safety education, and operational efficiency within the Sierra Madre Fire Department.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I'll let somebody else do the police.
Here, I can do that. I move to adopt resolution twenty-four sixty-seven for the police department assessment plan as the guiding, as, as a, a guiding document for improving public safety, law enforcement response, community engagement, and operational efficiency within the Sierra Madre Police Department.
Disappointing. Is that, was that the resolution number that changed? That is, okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. All right. Because this is a special meeting, we don't necessarily have a, a item on our agenda for future matters. But just in case anybody has anything, or we can, or we can hold until next meeting.
I think just because it's relevant, I, I'd like to, to see both organizations come back with their strategic plans. They're, they're in process. I'm really excited about them and would love to see them.
Yeah. And in no particular.
No, no, yeah. There, there's not to be, need to be time bound at this point.
Okay, great.
For adjournment.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's ten to four.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
What just happened?